I do want to just be on the records since we are being recorded. I reached out to the executive director once or twice. Things do get lost in my junk mail, so he may have reached out to me again. I should have said, we have not been able to.
Okay.
To connect yet.
I have to go to the person that he might have, so I'll just double back in tomorrow and make sure.
It has happened. I don't mean to say he has not tried.
I just like me, I've got a fairly healthy respect for your AARP committee. But I just want to make sure that we don't get carried away with that.
I think it's A R P A. AARP. I'm not sure which committee that is.
You're old enough for it.
Yeah, I am. I'm a member of AARP.
I just want to make sure that we don't use that as a pile of money that. Like you said a little while ago, you know, it's not something that we can use willy nilly, in my opinion. Because if it.
And I think the committee has thus far been very deliberate.
Oh, I don't think there's any question.
We talked with the finance committee member, David Larson, who's a member. He goes every single meeting. We speak between meetings regularly. Has been very complimentary of the process and how thorough it has been. And he's also identified other committees, and I have as well, and looked at their processes. And I think we've got a lot to be proud of, the way we're going through our business, to make sure that we're being very thoughtful. Some committees went right out of the gate, spent all their money, and whatever was right in front of them at that moment, that's where they went with it. We're very purposely are rolling things out as a need basis to start with. And then, you know, replenishing our free cash by using some of the ARPA, already approved articles in the warrant, that the community's already voted on. And that's another important place that we went to. So it's an incredible gift that we have these funds available to us. But it's incredibly important that we do it in a transparent and thoughtful way, and I feel really good.
No question. I agree totally.
All right, back to the capital.
That's good for the capital, probably, too. That's the bottom line. We started with a.
Yeah, then I said we had already agreed, said it might not be that same dollar value or that same unit. I think some of those questions that we had raised, Rafael, was going to come out in the RFP. It's like, he got some back in the envelope from some people, and that was his best estimate. But it's like, now put it out for RFP and see what comes back as options and costs. But it was agreed that it would be coming from ARPA and not from.
So because it's a capital item, it's on the capital plan. The funding source to the far right identifies it through an ARPA or branch or other source. My intention, though, is if we get the contract before the budget is finalized, this comes off of the capital plan because it's in this fiscal year, not the next fiscal year, which this represents.
All right.
Number two, downtown infrastructure improvements. So the park is listed for two hundred and fifty thousand. Do you know what had any data on this? So do we know what the two hundred and fifty thousand is? You know, it talks about a lease. Is there some backup to this?
So this item is a little less. Town has less control over this item. It is based on a negotiation with a private property owner in town.
Should we have an executive session, because it is a negotiation, to discuss?
I have to double check to make sure we can, in this case. And I'm not sure if we can, because it's not involving personnel per se. But we can look and say, I can speak to certain points of this, I think, without.
Jeopardizing.
End the negotiation. It is somebody who that. We've built a good relationship, a very positive relationship, and we made some very good progress building trust, which I think is a big part of what's needed to help us redefine our downtown. In this particular instance, there's a ten thousand dollar cost for someone to design it. Once we have a design, we can bid it and understand what a cost might be. So the numbers right now, because of where we are in the process with regards to the negotiation, and whether or not it even materializes is to be determined. But we don't have a scope of work quite yet, because we don't have a design. And we don't have a design, because that would cost us real money. And until we have a lease, a letter of intent signed for some sort of engagement, terms that are agreed to, we're looking to avoid spending that. So for the budget purpose, we put a number in there that is a placeholder. And again, this would be an ARPA-funded item. So there is a little bit more flexibility, and it's not something we've formally brought to the board quite yet. But it hopefully will be. And so we wanted to put something in there that we can at least recognize that this is something that's what we're looking at. And I know it's something that I've talked with members of the board, it is important that we try to get to the finish line with.
Is there anything that went into the two fifty? Is that lease payments?
So it's. So the intention of the lease, without having signed any agreements, but the intention of the lease is that the financial considerations around securing the rights to that land and the improvements that would come of it would be a nominal cost. In exchange for the improvements, the town would be able to then make the improvements and use that space for other purposes. And so with that, that two hundred thousand dollar number is based on. Knowing that, having been involved with commercial real estate, and then subsequently working on a number of infrastructure projects and parks built in my career, the two hundred might actually be a light number.
It's two fifty.
I'm sorry.
You're looking the wrong one.
The two hundred and fifty thousand might be.
Might be a light number to with.
We did a pocket park in Beverly with prevailing wages. And that was a little bit different, because there were certain elements with moving catch basins and different infrastructure components. Would add a little bit more cost. That cost, at the end of the day, was, and this was six years ago, six years ago, was north of three hundred thousand dollars. And it was not a much larger space than what we're talking about here. So this number here is very variable, but if we have a budget with the designer, we can say, this is our number. Design it in a way that we could, you know, you know what your unit costs would be to put brick in here versus granite or.
Grass.
There's no guess, but grass. But that would be part of that nine thousand we would spend with the designer, to say, this is our budget number. What can you give us for this? And then we look and say, that is not what we wanted. You know, what can we get for another fifty, or what, you know, that's way more than we needed. What can we get?
So the only real known cost is about ten thousand dollars. After that, it's more of a guess or a target.
It's a simple estimate, yeah. Because we don't have a design, and we don't want to spend upfront the money, because we have security on that property.
So if this has to go then to town meeting, all of that will be laid out ahead of time. All the details will be coming to us before it goes into a warrant.
It'll have to be.
We'd have, at the very least, we would have a lease agreement that we bring forward. That's what the community will be voting on at town meeting. And as soon as we had that, I would sign off on the engagement letter for the design work to take place, which would then allow us to have a design. And then, if timing, if we were able to move quickly, I found with this particular property owner, it's not always. It's more on his schedule than others sometimes. That. The hope would be if we moved quickly on it, and we get the rights to it, we could go to a. A bid for the project, hopefully right, well, it'd probably be after town meeting, because I wouldn't want to.
We need enough information to go to town meeting with, otherwise people are not going to approve it if they don't have any data.
The challenge is, though, and this is discussion for us. We spend nine thousand dollars before town meeting approves the lease. We've invested nine thousand for that, and if the town does not vote for it.
Worth it, I think, considering.
And that's the conversation I want to make sure I have with these folks, to make sure we're comfortable.
Because we can't, I mean, it's a horse and cart, chicken and egg. Like, we can't bring it to the town unless we know what we're bringing to the town, and we can't know it unless we spend the money to know.
So the most important thing is to get that agreement with the owner.
Yes, first step, have to.
Because we're not going to spend the money till we.
No.
Yeah, that's the first step. You gotta wrap up the access to the property before you do anything else.
Are we close to that, do you think?
We finally got a meeting after about a month and a half of attempts, multiple times each week to get that meeting. But Sam made it happen, so after the holidays.
He's not the easiest guy in the world, but.
I totally agree, because I'm looking at a little picture in the PDF and scratching my head saying, what are we spending, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, I don't think that picture is.
It's not an exact representation of what.
But it's also not necessarily going to be two hundred and fifty thousand.
It's not even the area. That was actually from the design work that was done for Main Street as a possible frontage to like country farms and T-Pot.
It's about as close as we could get to the area of the question that we actually had design work for.
Yeah.
But that little sliver on the right hand side would be part of that area that we would secure and approve.
But so can I ask again about this being under the ARPA, then? If we're saying, yes, let's go forward with at least the design and getting the lease, we're not, like, part of whether I think it's worth it is going to be dependent, same with the townspeople. It's going to depend on, well, what the heck are we getting for it? So we're not saying this is going to end up in the committed funds for ARPA, are we?
Not until we get to a point where we have at least a letter of intent, a lease that we can bring to the community to vote on, a designer onboard, and hopefully.
So until then, it stays in potential.
Exactly. And then, once we get those checked, those boxes checked, we can bring something more formal to you folks, and then obviously to the people of the community as well. All right. I know that there's one item here I wanted to make sure I, there's two, but one that is next on the list that I want to make sure I make mention to. In the January work session, I'm going to ask that the chief of police and the police captain join us to do a presentation on the police cruisers. There's two there. Before this meeting began today, we had our budget meeting and capital meeting with the police department. And we spent two hours on the police cruisers. The intent is not to spend two hours at the work session with you folks, but it was intended for us to kind of walk through what they have. There's some really great data that talks about the need for the police cruisers, which is really the primary focus right now, is ensuring that we know what we have for equipment and where they are, their life cycles, and historically, how we've gone about allocating funds from the police department when it comes to cruisers. But I just wanted to say that that particular item, we have that earmarked for that date to have a further discussion.
When they come, Kevin, will they have the information on the EV? Because I'm sure they're going to be putting forward a proposal of gas powered or EVs as well.
So we're going to provide, we're going to, the intention is going to be to discuss the. We have all that. The discussion for the January meeting will be first and primarily to discuss the need, because I think more than what type of vehicle, you'll see how clear it is that we're putting good money after bad, and that there's some real wear and tear of these vehicles and the need. Subsequently, once we've gone through that, the intention will be to talk about some of the data that we've compiled between EV and gas combustion and the paybacks, which have actually hit almost square on what we predicted a year ago. And then, there'll be a further discussion on what the recommendation from the police chief will be, and the plan, not just this year, but potentially in the years to come, based on where the markets are. And there's been a lot of feedback that we've done to the police department to get feedback on the vehicles. A lot of different pieces that will help conform.
I would say that on the data around the EV and costs, that is definitely something we want before the meeting with enough time. Because a lot of times, you know, we get the data at the same time, and we don't know what questions we want to ask, because we haven't had a chance to look at.
We'll get the presentation to you all, which has the data prior to the meeting.
Yep.
And I'm sure for him to come up with a PowerPoint, he had to have spreadsheets that showed all the stats that went into it. If he could share those as well, so that we could see what's behind the numbers that are on the presentation.
Okay. It's going to make it go faster, because otherwise, he's going to come and do a presentation, and we're going to say, all right, well, now we have to look at all of this, come back in two weeks.
That was the, I mean, we talked about, I actually said, do you want to introduce it tonight, chief? Because we have budget. And I said, we both, as I said, I said, let's go January, let's be strategic, let's be very thoughtful in how we approach this. And, yeah, there's, we said we would be submitted probably right after the New Year, and we said we'd advance, if not more, the information.
Well, then, we don't have to talk anymore about that tonight, or the radios.
We go for each one, so.
Yeah. Well, I will ask, I mean, before I go through and ask, does anyone have another item they want to specifically discuss?
So not that's listed for free cash, so do we table that, or are we just focusing on the free cash ones?
No.
Talk the entire capital.
I would say any of these fifteen or fourteen.
Make the same comment on the parking storage bays that we made last time, and that is to pick my job off the floor.
Mine, too.
That's just, that's crazy.
That was the second item that, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay to comment on that, the police cruisers and that, we've done some work on. So the, that building, the day before the Capitol was due, after multiple months of trying to have the local Morton sales rep. Finally got back to Mr. Wilds, provided us a number that I, knowing how busy they are, was a number that if we were willing to pay it, they would do the work, because they have plenty of other work. It wasn't a good deal, it was a make us come do the job for you.
Exactly.
So what I've asked Mr. Wilds to do subsequently is to look at the market and see if there's other vendors that are available, who would give us an idea of an alternative than a Morton building, similar type, so that we can get a, see if there's a better price, just for at least a budgeting purpose. Because that we, I'll say this, I would never feel comfortable recommending we've spent three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars on that building. I would not do that.
You can build a house with that kind of money.
If you own the property.
Hey, me, I'll build that thing.
Isn't the same Morton sales rep that gave us the nine thousand for the?
Conex box?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
And what I would say this, too, is the intention of those bays is to allow us, we need the space, but it would go in conjunction with a sale of the highway garage, the old highway garage.
Yeah.
So if we go and potentially just come back in the spring with S, with a corrupt, if that is not sold in the next year, and ARPA's still available, and then in two years, you know, if the ARPA's still available to us, and we decided, and that, if it does sell, great, we go, if the price makes sense. But we wouldn't be preemptively building those bays without that consideration of what's happening at the highway garage.
Does that go in and in with the Conex boxes, which both list sale of the property is part of the rationale for needing it?
So that, so the Conex boxes, the police are going to put in the two, one variable message board and two speed. It's by these equipment right now that are being upheld at the highway. They have an eviction notice, and they've run out of space up there. So basically, they said adjusted, Gary has some real needs, and so they need to find a new home. Currently, they have a Conex box behind the parking lot, behind the police station. This is the second where they would then be able to put and cover those pieces of equipment that we just invested in, so.
So theirs is a current need.
Yep, and then the fire department, there is a need right now. That one in particular has more of a relation to the use of the existing highway garage, and more importantly, that storage space behind that. So it's a combination for the fire department of existing need in collaboration with the space becoming unavailable, where current products being stored, being consolidated into that one Conex box.
Perhaps my only other one was the boiler. Is that right on oil at the fire department? It's natural gas?
It's gas.
Okay.
We just, something that would be helpful, I think, is just if they had page numbers, so they can say, people turn page nine, that's the one I'm talking about.
Well, see, online here, I have numbers, so that's why I was asking you what number you were on. We're all looking at it differently.
Yeah, I'm on paper, so. Something found out. If there were no other questions, I had one on the five hundred thousand for the fire engine. So I know that just recently, one of the fire engines.
Fire ambulance?
Ambulance one, sorry. Is this the vehicle that got the nineteen thousand dollar engine repair, or is that a different one?
Yeah, so right now, we have two ambulances, A one and A two. A one is a two thousand and.
Sixteen.
Sixteen model, the other one was two thousand and eight. That's A two. A two is the one which went to, had engine issues, and we needed, we had to end up having an eighteen thousand dollar, sorry, nineteen thousand dollar repairs of the engine. While it was out of service for a number of months, we were borrowing multiple ambulances from the communities to allow us to have a backup ambulance. And we worked through it. That vehicle's now back online, we've got that vehicle back, which is great. The idea is now, that vehicle, if we are approved July one or a date thereafter, we would put an order in for a new ambulance. Lead times right now, I think, are over a year. So we would continue to operate with the existing A one and A two, sixteen and nine, early eight. And when, in a year and a half to two years' time, we have that second, that new ambulance on, A one would drop to A two, the new one would become A one, our primary, our first one. And then the one that we just, the improvements for on the engine would become our backup. Because we found with this one going down, we always have to have a backup.
So we'd have three ambulances?
That's the chief's intention at this point in time, is to keep that third, not online, but available to us in the event that something happens to the other ones.
Can I just go through this again? A one is two thousand and sixteen. A two is two thousand and eight.
Yep.
So we're replacing, or we're not replacing, we're just adding two? We're just adding a third, because it says replacement of the frontline.
Yeah, that's because I think part of it would be redetected. So I think the two thousand and eight would be effectively replaced, but we just wouldn't sell the two thousand.
In any sense, that's what's happening.
I thought it was that the one that just had the nineteen thousand dollar repair, that they did the evaluation of whether you could repair the engine, or whether you needed to replace the vehicle. And they said, no, the vehicle's in good shape. It's just a known defect with the engine. And so it's more cost effective to just spend the nineteen thousand than to replace it. So if it was in good enough shape to just have a defect in the engine replaced, now we're taking it offline with a new half million dollar?
So first off, this partly going to be funded through ARPA, and this is something we discussed with the ARPA working group.
Well, apart from where it comes from, because to, you know, as we discussed, it's all money available to the town for various purposes. But if we just repaired it, because it was in good enough shape.
Well, it's not that it was in good enough shape. We, so we, what we brought to the ARPA group, we discussed this in great detail. And the options that Chief Collins Brown brought to the table was, we could look at two used ambulances down on the Cape. We could replace the engine on this. But either way, we're kind of putting a Band-Aid on the vehicle, because it does, it's, the number of hours on it and the assessment that's been done on that vehicle is that we anticipate there'll be a number of times that it's coming offline, and the repair is coming. We're finding out with the police cruisers, for example, our maintenance line item right now, we're at ninety seven percent of our, and we're not even six months into the fiscal year. So I would let Chief Collins Brown speak to this, because this is where she's the expert, because she's been down there talking with the mechanics, talking with specifics of what the plan is for this. But the intention is to replace A two, which did just have the improvements, but which is in very, it's not in very good shape.
And that replacement would basically take almost two years to actually come to fruition.
And that's a big part of it, too, because if, we would not necessarily be looking to purchase this year based on the work that we just did. But because of the lead time and the critical need to make sure we have an ambulance that can be available to us, so that we can make the calls. Working with the ARPA group subsequently speaking, it was last night, or Monday night, in front of the FinCom, Chief Collins Brown talked about all of this with them as well, that there's a clear understanding that there's certainly a need to make the investment.
I don't know when the appropriate time to discuss the effect of third ambulances, but I have a lot of questions about that.
I definitely want to let chief speak to that, this is something that we had our budget meeting to be saying. We talked about the Capitol as well. And that was something that I, to be honest with you, I was not aware of it, that was the intention. So this is within twenty four hours that I've learned that this is the intention. So that's why I said I really prefer her speak to it.
And this write-up, then, is not correct, because it says we're replacing A one, and the current backup will be de-commissioned. So it doesn't lead anyone to know we're actually going to have three ambulances then.
So when this was, again, it was within twenty four hours ago that I learned of the change, but the, this was submitted, I think, back at the end of September. So this certainly has changed, and it's something we'll update as needed.
Okay, so the cap for that.
Were you going to put a thirty?
I don't know, we're going to need another three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars down there.
Apparently, we, let's not sell the highway garage, because we can just stick it down there. All right, anyway. So, yeah, that one needs a lot of work. With our, so we have discussed now the park. We have discussed that, we're not discussing the police cruisers over the radios. We've discussed the Conex containers and the ambulance. You brought up the boiler, Mr. McDonald, and then there's another Conex container. Highway department vehicles, I feel like we've discussed those before, are there any questions on that one? A highway vehicle plow replacement?
I have none.
Okay, then we get to the big building, which I think we've discussed. That brings us up next to lawn mowers and pickup trucks.
And on the lawn mowers, for anybody who's listening, we did discuss battery powered and electric, and they are cost prohibitive for what we need them to do.
Cemetery building chapel rehab is the next item. I have thoughts, or, you know, I don't even think thoughts is correct. I know a lot about this, but my first question is, does anyone have questions about this? Because I'll say I don't know that this survives, given what we heard of today. Gary did some, we're talking about what I know of as the Hearst House, which is right next to the cemetery, I'll call it the office building. A rehab was begun on that, I don't know how long ago, because during my time on Park and Cemetery, my eighteen months or whatever that was, that work was already underway, and then stopped, dead stopped at some point. Gary got a very unofficial, I don't know what you would call it, somebody to come look at it, and that person suggested it's going to cost a really large amount of money to finish the project as was envisioned years ago. So I don't know where we are on that item right now.
I guess my question would be, what, it says here, use benefits as well as an aesthetic improvement. So what is it going to be used for?
Well, so the concept, and again, this is years ago, and it was already underway, is it's considered, at least by some, to be kind of a historic building there. It's a nice, small building. The idea was to rehab it, and then you could utilize it as a small function space, a chapel, you know, related to cemetery things. So after a funeral, you could have a small reception there, probably, you know, you could have an observance or a service there. It would become a public space, probably mostly to do with what I'll call cemetery business. But in theory, it would be a nice, small chapel-like building that could be used for any number of things that people would have concepts for. But I think a lot of that was conceived when the costs were small-ish, relatively small.
And Gary and his team would manage bookings and cleanups and.
That, I don't think we ever got to that level of specificity. But, yes, in the same way that the cemetery, who probably fall a lot on the list, but who obviously is the admin up there. But, yes, that was, I think, the basic idea.
How does Gary feel about this?
Well, in my conversations with him, where I basically asked, where are we on this? Because, you know, with the advent of COVID and the changeover from Steve to him, I think it kind of fell by the wayside. And so he, when he got back into it, the first question is, how much work still needs to be done, and what does that look like? Having gotten an unofficial potential response to that, I think, really, any discussion beyond that is, we're ahead of ourselves at that point, because I don't know that we're going to get to that point. If nothing else, I think it bears a lot more looking at what it will actually take to get that building to what it was conceived, if it's even possible to get it there. I mean, it certainly is possible, if you wanted to spend a really lot of money. But have I captured essentially where we are with this?
I think, absolutely. I think that's a great assessment. I would just add, we are looking at alternatives to, based on the estimates we heard from today, of possibly just shoring up the exterior of the park for good three quarters, not even for some of that building. It's already, and the exterior has already been renovated, with those sod. There's a, if you look at the front door, the back left corner, there's still some work that needs to happen. So I was talking to Ben Wilds Tuesday at a inner D building meeting, and I suggested, when he was going to get the price, and said, you know, maybe we can look internally as well, to see if we could finish some of that work, just to secure the exterior of the building. A lot of the work that's driving the costs, electrical work that actually was previously done, but is now out of code, because it's been such a period of time. was previously done, but is now out of code because it's been such a period of time since they've done the work before that have to be redone. Floors, walls, there's a lot of the interior. So I think from the beautification component of that, I think there is a need to probably finish at least some of that. And hopefully we can do it internally at little to no cost outside of the general operating.
What are they using it for now?
Storage.
They, they lawn mowers.
Chief stores signs.
There's, 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 the zero term will always go there, go there now, which is, is never, I think, the intention of that building. But some of the limitations on space and we're using all the nicks and cranks or anything else we possibly can.
For, for what it's worth, worth, one of the number one comments that I've gotten from Townspoke is that the live, sorry, the cemetery could use some love. So I, I think the aesthetic component to this would go a long way towards that. At the very least.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think in concept, I loved it. I mean, again, it existed before I was ever involved, but I loved the idea. Hey, we're talking about.
Knew I should have come back.
We're, we're actually discussing the Hearst House right now. So anyway, I think the concept of what the Parkland Cemetery Board was looking at way back when, when I joined, was terrific. I certainly don't want to, I, I don't think that the process that was undertaken at the time was as formal and planned out as probably it should have been. And I think that might be why we're looking a little bit in the place where we are, either with work that just stopped or not fully understanding what needed to be done. But now that we're doing it in a more formal fashion, I don't know that we'll ever be able to hit what that concept was.
Thoughts, Gary?
Are we talking solely the chapel or overall grounds?
No, right now, we're specifically discussing that building. And that the fact that the concept was storage spa, or not storage space, a function space and chapel, but to do that would involve all the, I didn't put any of the numbers that you shared, I just said that they were big numbers, bigger than we were prepared.
And I painfully, I think I said it at the bottom of my email, it didn't want to hit it when I found that out. So what that, if it was done right was, now, there's two parts of that. Is it ultimately, what's the goal of that to be used for? And how often will it, will it not be used? I get the sentiment of, well, we'd like to see it used as. But if we're being, and if you're asking, I will say it me, if I'm running the business, is that cost effective, or what we're trying to do going forward? And what is it going to be used for? I understand some of it, and depending on who you talk to, is there is where it lies, what is important to some and what isn't to others. So I'm under direction of bosses that would tell me certain things. So I, I'm trying to, somewhere in the middle with that. It's an older building that is, my understanding, was the original Wally Nealon, as I was saying to gentlemen, was the, the office space. And I, it literally is yesterday from a former, who was my, well, Rick, excuse me, Bill Gamble. His son worked there for Wally and that was the office building. Before anything else was built there, that was the office. So when I talked to the builder consultant, it wasn't as old as I thought it was because he looked inside, he could see the bones of it because it's gutted inside and could tell by what year it may or may not be by construction methods. So it's not as old as I thought it was, to be honest. It is still an older building. What do we do with it? What is the intention of it? I guess it's risk reward for above and beyond my pay grade as to what we want or not to spend on that and risk reward in regards to that.
Gary, you should be a politician.
What are we?
You didn't say at all what you think should be done with that building.
What we do with it? Well, I'm careful because I am trying to do certain things to improve what, what I need to get done for the grounds and other things, as well as what I think should be done or what shouldn't be done with something. I, I, again, it's what's going to be used?
Do you see a good use for it? Would you say we really could use X? Or would you say if I had funds, I would put it to this instead of rehabbing that house?
You like that it's storing lawn mowers right now? That's the use you would prefer?
I, the practical side of me, I'd be perfectly honest, the practical side of me, if I can get the equipment that you all vote on to help me get the job done, and if I can keep that lasting longer because it's not out in the weather, then that answer is yes. Short of that, that's storage. I'm being perfectly honest with you. That is what I look at because the common sense person to me is, the longer I can add, make that equipment last, the less I have to come back to you all to beg for more. So that being said, yes, I understand the other side of that. We want to make things look better. We'd love to have a chapel like that. I, I don't know, you know, the, the common sense side of me is that the other thing that I could use, could I use those funds for?
Is there a lot of public outcry for having a chapel located on the cemetery?
Not that I'm aware of, but that doesn't mean it isn't there. But I have never had anybody ask me, John Q. Public, what are we using this for? There could be some historic sense to that still though, I have to admit. It is an older building, it's just not as back as, you know, I originally thought that was part of the meeting house, which is depicted on the, the pillars when you come into the cemetery. It doesn't date that back, far back. If anybody ever stops for a second to read that plaque on the left-hand side, explaining the cemetery and/or the meeting house, that was sitting right there on the top left. And it actually was part of a guardhouse back during the Revolutionary War, if you read that plaque. I hadn't read it until too long ago, and I have since. But anyways, to that point, it doesn't go back that far. So again, it's an appetite of who has an interest in it. I need to run the department, what I need to do day to day. So I, it, to me, it doesn't, I hate to say it this way, it doesn't matter that much. I need to make sure the equipment stays running so I don't have to ask constantly for things and I can make it run longer. So if I can keep that, storage is at a premium right now. We're busting at the seams, thankfully for what you all have done in the past. The past couple of years of getting things we need, I want to make sure they keep running. Part of that with me is, anything I can get inside and out of the critters is less that has to get fixed by a mechanic that there's only one of for 70 pieces of equipment. So that also speeds things up. So efficiency comes into play with this, for the moment.
So what I would say, going back to what's in front of us, is I think we would all agree that it at least needs to be, I don't know if the word's beautified or shored up or the outside. Like, we need to tackle the outside of this one area.
I, I would agree. It is a.
The inside is where all of your massive newfound expense is. The outside, it seems like we can do at a reasonable cost. And whether it's storage, whether it's just so it looks better from the outside, I don't think, or at least I would not advocate that we knock down the building. So as long as it's going to exist there, it needs to look better.
I would absolutely agree that it, and there are some things that need to be done there. Certainly, that needs to be beautified, if you will. Whether that is paint and/or what we can do in-house, certainly that needs to be done. Now, some of the things going forward is, the Morton Building that is currently there needs paint. A lot of it is just in neglect that needs, unfortunately, funding to make it look a little better. A fence along there, at some point, I'd love to see a violent fence put up to separate from some of the older stones that are in that cemetery that date back to 1500 or, excuse me, 1750s is right along where the building is. If there's that separation, you know, you know, one of those is, what is this? There should be something that we need to do, something I've thought of, but that all comes back to funding in due time.
I, I remain befuddled then, what, what is the 20,000 for?
I feel like that was just a number that somebody made up.
So 20,000 is a number that somebody made up. It's, in essence, it was, it's, it's best guess before we had a chance to have somebody come out there and say, you know, if we shored up the outside and we did some basics on the inside.
Okay.
I was led to believe, based on the previous administration in the cemetery and the, the board that I was a member of, that we had already, work was underway and it just needed to be finished.
Yep.
Clearly, it's more than just needs to be finished.
To that end, I think that's thought, just ingenuous. It was being done. The contractor being used would come and go.
At will.
Thank you. So, and, and I know the contractor, and what, but it was at will. But it was so long drawn out where even part of the, where I put in that body of email about the electrical service and what was done inside, when that was done, which has remained unfinished, I don't know that that now meets code.
Kevin, Kevin.
So it's like, and that's why I was so, sending the email, I'm telling you, I'm going to lose it when I send this. What are justifiable numbers now, I'm like, God almighty. But that was.
Maybe we just get a new number, Gary, for cleaning up the exterior to make it look better?
Well, I mean, ultimately, I think that, at this point, we, even, even if the number for the interior weren't potentially large, we as a board in a town don't necessarily have an agreement, a consensus on what we want the interior to be. I think we all agree that we want the outside to look better. So I think this, this needs to be rewritten and repriced just to tackle the outside.
We would have to have that conversation. So I can, I can promise you, I could paint it in-house. But when I say in-house, we could do the paint. But I don't know, that's the sole, and maybe that's a greater conversation that we have a look at.
Yeah, maybe go back and just readdress what you need to do exterior.
Because we're not, we, I don't have any carpenters working for me. So if were they carpenters, they probably working for the gentleman that was giving the, the consultation on it. So you can only do so much.
We'll get a better price on the exterior.
And when you say old warrant article on the funding for this, what old warrant article is there?
I believe it's a cemetery fund that we are supplementing with.
Yeah, it says free cash plus old warrant.
Yeah, so we had to try to keep it apples to apples. We had the cemetery improvements this year, the expansion, the water line and the paving that'll take, excuse me, that'll take place in the spring. That money, we have used ARPA rather than the cemetery monies. And so those articles, those articles have to either go to a warrant article, go back into the cemetery general fund and/or go back there. And a piece of it can be used for the finishing next year improvements of the building. If so choose.
Marshall, you mentioned a while ago about the fact that the long-term plan that was established by previous cemetery administrations, you liked that idea. You liked what they.
I, I did like that idea. I didn't like, I don't like that idea at the potential numbers of what it would be.
Well, that.
I liked it back when it was $20,000 and it was almost done.
My carry-on to that was, did you get a number? I, I think I heard that it was going to be so much that nobody wanted to give you a number. Did we get a number on what that would cost to do today?
If that's the number that Gary got, it's a very big number.
Gary, what is that number?
$130,000 is what that.
To the little building.
So for the little building.
A little bigger building.
Now it's just the 375.
130, is that what it was?
So potentially, I, I.
It was technically, it's 160.
Okay, so 160. Point is, it's a very big number for what would be.
It's a crazy number.
A minimal.
That we don't even know what we want to do with it.
This is why I'm saying, at this point, I don't think anyone, anywhere is interested in even having the discussion about doing the interior work when we don't even have consensus on what we want the interior to be.
Thus my angst for sending out the email yesterday.
The idea of using it for those purposes was back when it was an unknown but reasonable number that was going to be paid by cemetery funds or what have you.
To Marshall's point and your question, Boyd, the original, when this was the designer idea to do this, it just was never finished upon, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I wish it had been, then we obviously wouldn't be having this conversation. It was just never seen fruition. And then now we find ourselves where we are.
Which is, which is why I'm, I am fine putting the interior discussion away potentially forever. But I do think if we focus on the outside of the building, that that'll accomplish a lot of stuff.
I, I, I'm still, I still would be concerned about what we're going to do, how, and I, that, that's a nice looking old building, in my opinion. And, and we're going to spruce it up a little bit by painting it and cleaning it, whatnot. But you consider the other buildings next door to it, and it's still going to look like a.
What other building?
Well, well, we have our main garage. So I know, I know what Boyd's saying is, so you have this nice quaint quintessential building, the chapel. And then we have our functional aluminum storage garage, office space, all that. And you're working bones of the cemetery, which you need. So it is kind of where that sits down next to these. It's like, well, whatever you do, the lipstick on this is still going to pale because of these.
Oh, no, if you give a mouse a cookie.
But.
Well, let's spend, let's spend some more money and move that pretty little building somewhere where we'd like it to be.
Six million.
Huh?
Six million to move it.
All right. Well, with that, we'll table that for now and get a better idea on what the outside work may look like. But that takes us through all 15 of these items.
Yep.
We've hit all 15 of them. So with that, where do we go from here?
So thank you for the feedback. There's a few items I'll be able to make some adjustments to include in detail and on the general capital. So this is very helpful conversation.
Can, can I ask though, the 15 are just what's under total for town? That's not the Water Enterprise, which gets funded differently?
Correct.
Did I understand that?
That's right. To the operating areas.
Go ahead.
So we'll move the capital. And what I'd like to do is just give a very quick update on the operating budget. So this week, I'm meeting with all the department heads. And I had just to meet with the police, the fire, DPW, which are our, their biggest departments when it comes to a budgetary standpoint outside our water. And I've been with some of the library, treasurer's office. Tomorrow and Friday, finish up with the rest of the team. The due date is next week for the budgets to be submitted to the accountant and myself. And then that gets pushed together. We have our ALDBUS, which will be provided shortly after the first week of January. The FinCon met Monday night and they discussed their schedule, just right away, update to the board on their budget process. They're going to be meeting with the schools in mid-January and late-January. And then the last meeting that they're having in January and February, they'll be meeting with department heads to discuss the budgets in their meetings. From our perspective, what I'd like to do is, once our budget comes in, is to then schedule in January, I'll look at the schedule, but January into February, start looking at having similar conversations around the budget. There are certain budgets that are very smaller than others. Maybe it's maybe less, less changes than your year, that I would look to receive guidance or input from the board. Now that work sessions have been pushed from three o'clock during the workday to six o'clock, what, if there's, if you'd like to see all the departments or consolidate that, we usually do a three work sessions in a row where all the departments come and discuss. We can continue that. But knowing our budget constraints this year, the departments, unless absolutely necessary, have been instructed to, to not expand on those budgets. And people are doing a really good job on it. So we could talk more about that, but in the, making a decision right now. But the idea would be to have those meetings. It could be everyone, it could be some of the departments that we've identified that we want to bring back and discuss. I know the police, fire, DPW absolutely will be coming in. But, you know, library might be one, some others, but up to the board, what, how deep we want to go in, in discussions. And some of those smaller, without concern, we speak to them as well. If there's no changes, which it will be in some cases. That's the budget. And then the last item I just wanted to start the conversation is potential warrant articles for 23. I've started to work on the actual version one of the warrant, which is exciting. We're ahead of schedule. Usually this is something that happens after the new year, but we're, we're starting to plug away with it. What we provided up on board docs is a list of some very preliminary warrant articles. They don't include the typical ones that we have every year. Budgets and grants, things of that nature, the consent agendas that, that really do not change. And if they do, it's, it's not typically significant. Obviously, our budget would, but that's just, that's article three and then article four and five, six, and that's the schools, et cetera. So I started with basically the capital, worked our way through, all the way down through the zoning changes. And the reason there's some gaps in there, Article 27 through 31 is not knowing what we're adding. I didn't want to start moving articles around quite yet, so I left those blanks. If we don't fill them, we'll move articles up. If we fill, we have a need for more, we'll move articles down. But for instance, last year, Masco, I think, had about eight articles when they ref, did some tweaks to the language of their, their tri-town agreement. And so that, that's what most of that represents. There's one in there I did not mention, I mentioned it tonight earlier, it's not written down.
Why not?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
This was my question.
All right. Very good. So with regards to the cemetery, just capital items we had last year, where we used cemetery funds, the expansion is, Mr. Wildes has been champion, championing, that we use ARPA money to supplement the cemetery funds. So those cemetery funds ultimately have to go back, so that's an article that I'll be adding in there for, to put the money back into the account. Typically, we tried it once the money's expended from like a free cash account, to put it towards another capital item for free cash, but because cemetery funds are separate, then the free cash and the general operating budget, we'll have to talk to the caper about this, we'll have to make that adjustment as our warrant will put back in. So available for any questions, thoughts?
Just a couple of comments for each bylaw change. We need a separate article?
Depends.
Okay. I'm just thinking of the ones that we talked about, whether they would have to be broken out from the numbering. So under Article 33, the water, highway, and park and cemetery commissioners, it's actually just park and cemetery commissioners, that's 16-8, and then separate, perhaps, I don't know legally if it's required, but 16-10 is the public works committee. So I don't know if that needs to be broken out. In both of those cases, since those three departments now are reporting up under Kevin, it still says in the bylaws that we have a park and cemetery commissioners now on board, so that would come out. And we have a public works committee in the bylaws, and that actually is taking place under Kevin. It was more of the efficiencies, that the highway, water, and parks would work together to find ways, and, you know, working together and finding efficiencies. And all that is just in the daily operation now, so that one isn't being.
Boyd, I got to tell you, the Parkland Cemetery Commission hasn't met in years. We're way behind if by the bylaws we still exist. I don't think I would hold that off a sentence.
Yeah, so it was just like cleaning it up. We went in for another reason, for zoning purposes, and that's when I stumbled across them, and so Kevin and I talked, and said, we might as well just clean them up, and the planning board is actually putting the verbiage together to be presented to us, so. And then the last one is just, since park and cemetery commissioners went away, it's changing Chapter 75 with the select board, just to state that the select board now is the board of commissioners, just so it's clear. So those are three, and I just don't know if they need to be in three separate.
I mean, I know Matt from KP is aware, is working on it, and I think we'll just follow his lead in how he wants to break that out.
Okay, so he's going to work on it once the planning board passes that over? Okay. And then just the, I didn't know what the Business Village District zoning bylaw change was.
So one of the discussions I've had with the planning board chair is, and also with our consultants helped us with the whole highway project, is looking at the zoning, now that we've gotten feedback from our first attempt with putting that out, that RFP out on the street, and talking with different potential investors and developers, trying to create some specific language in there that allows for a specific use that I think could be beneficial for that particular space. And that language is to allow more clearly, something that would allow for a brewery or a taproom or something like that. We heard that that, for that space, it makes a lot of sense. Our consultant, who used to be the Ipswich Planner for multiple decades, believed that the existing zone does not allow that by right, or by special permit. And so I've spoken with the chair of the planning board, she, she's generally supportive of the concept at this point. Consultant was going to talk with, with Ms. Morrison about this and trying to figure out what's the right fit. So that's, that's the sort of mark that we have some changes coming to make it more, it's a greater opportunity to downtown. And it's this very specific thing, we're doing, I'll mention this, sorry, I don't want to keep going, but with the master plan, we want to make sure all any zoning changes that we roll forward in the next 18 months are pretty, as comprehensive as possible. But in this particular case, because it's so specific, and it really affects, in this case, that property, there's a lot of good sense in trying to pursue it, especially with the timing, the economic element.
Okay, thanks.
Very helpful.
Were there any other questions on articles listed here?
None of this one. The feasibility study at Clock Park, maybe I should know about this one already? Sorry?
No, it, again, this is, this is kind of the starting point for this, so absolutely. There's been a group of individuals who've come together who are advocating for improved surface at Clock Park. Our team, our, our Park and Cemetery team, led by Mr. Wildes and Travis Good, our foreman, have looked at multiple creative ways to try to address the issue, which is that we don't have irrigation, and we can't put water on it, typically with our water bans. And so the fields by August are, are in pretty tough shape annually. There's grubs, there's a lot going on there. We've looked at a different opportunity, different ways, but the group that's, that's approached us, has asked us to consider putting money forward in a specific article that allow for a feasibility study. And that feasibility study will allow us to look at multiple options, not only how to fix it now, but whatever option we choose can be sustainable long time, long term. And although we've, we've talked with MIT about using D-bag fertilization on the fields and new technologies, those will be part of the conversation, but to kind of take all the different ideas and say, what are the priorities, what are the options, and what's going to really work, is what we're, we're hoping to accomplish.
School bus contract, that falls under the warrant, not schools?
Yes, because it'll be a contract, and it'll be a five-year contract. I had approached the schools about electrification of the school bus fleet. Yeah, I, we, we had about a year ago, really great conversation with NRT, that electrification bus vendor that I know, that we brought in, and we had a, we had a brief conversation. NRT actually has hired an individual to work on electrification of their fleet. That's their sole responsibility with the company. NRT is the bus provider, and.
And, and an early adopter of electrification?
Yes.
Buses in the country?
They have two communities in the Commonwealth that they're currently piloting with the electrified buses. I, I maybe overstuffed, but I said, can we do that? We'd love to be one. They said, no, not this time. But, you know, it's something that I've seen firsthand be successful, and I think that it's something that the market's moving towards anyway. But it sounds like at this time, the RFP that they put out, the scope did not incorporate any electrification. They did say, though, that it, the contract will allow for it to be reopened if financially it's a break even, or it makes sense to, to look at electrification during the five-year period.
All right. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? All right, perhaps in that?
Want some to attend?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No, we are adjourned.